Mr. Hacks.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Keller, would you mind, you need some paper please?
Sure.
Everybody, please hold your hands over your head. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for the opportunity to gather together this evening and to conflate business of our city. We pray that you would watch over the actions of this evening, that they be pleasing to you. In the name of prayer. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. Okay, the reading of the minutes from the November 4th. Meeting.
Motion to approve and suspend the meeting.
Yeah, motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Keller, discussion. All in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Uh, approval of the agenda, so we did have an addition since the email agenda. I think you all have the uh, A B, you have permit review rates all over here.
Yeah.
Anything else make a change to the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion by Keller to approve the agenda.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of approving this agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Agenda approved. Five A, Bank North Quarter requisition number 10. Alright, so you can see the requisition we have up, same B and D. For three hundred ninety thousand eight fifty-four. Any sense? Jared or Monty, anything that's had?
And this is based off the last pay estimate of the contractor plus an interim piece for October. And. Yeah, just October, end of September, October.
Any questions? Well, after this number 10, what do we have left? Just a little bit of, just the.
Five thousand bucks from contractor and whatever the remaining closeout engineering is.
If there's no question or terms, except motion.
Motion to approve requisition number 10 in the amount of three hundred ninety thousand eight hundred fifty-four dollars and eight cents.
A motion by Keller?
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. Roll call.
Keller.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
O'Vonour.
Aye. Motion carried. Five B, engineers report.
Yeah. Two weeks ago, I wasn't on the app meeting, but I did call in for you guys and you guys approved semifinal payment for Mayo construction. So, just wasn't here, a little bit hard to hear, but I think, I'm pretty sure you guys like just left retained five thousand bucks, that was the decision. So, way we done the paperwork, you know, June rolls around, everything looks right, you guys can release that money to the contractor, assuming they have ninety percent coverage in all the areas. So, I don't expect any action or decisions or discussion really until then. So, you might not see the contractor, we probably won't talk about it much. Few miscellaneous odds and ends to, you know, go through, but otherwise that's about it. I don't have much here. We still do have lingering issues in a couple places, expedition states, obviously. The Fifth Street Northwest sanitary sewer mine, do what they have televised at some point. The water storage application for plumbing is out there. I still don't know, guys, when they'll consider that, you know, we thought it was a long shot that they would consider in October and then they didn't. So, that's out there. We'll just have to be mindful that if the years go by, we'll have to adjust estimates accordingly. But, right now, I assume it'll be on early spring agenda and they'll prioritize it or not prioritize it, hard to say. If we don't make it on that list, we might have to, you know, talk to your local representatives about getting prioritized. But until then, I think I'd just let it be. General city items, um, not a lot, other than there's, throughout the year, there's different funding deadlines. The N D D O T Streets Program deadline is December thirty first. I don't know if I've talked too much about that, we talked a little bit about the North Cumbia Streets Summit a few weeks ago. It's program, it's a couple million dollar, two million dollar limit for that program. And what it is, is it can be used for improvements along state highways, so pedestrian trails, lighting, storm sewer, kind of like your upgrades, more than what the D O T would just normally do on their own. So, if there's pieces of pedestrian trail missing, or if there's lighting you want to consider adding, that would be a great application to that program. It's ninety percent cost share from the D O T, but it's a competitive program, so.
Two million dollars statewide.
Two million dollars per project, I believe. I think it's three million dollars statewide.
Okay.
So yeah, it's almost a whole bit. But, due December thirty first, if you decide you want to apply for something, we should start talking about it now though, because we have time here in, at one of your consummations to talk about it. So, keep it on your radar, minimum anyways in your interest. And then the last thing is just the C W S R F questionnaire. This is the two percent loan money that city, you're on the priority list for drinking water, and this will be the priority list for clean water. So, one can use for sewer related items, one can use for water related items. For instance, the water tower does go, you need a local share, a local max loan money. This will be the pot to the money or the program you can use to pick the local share, or prairie dog money, or whatever you choose to. The clean water side is the same thing, two percent interest loan, you can borrow loan money for up to thirty years. Lagoon improvements, lift station improvements, refinancing existing sewer debt, sanitary sewer mains, storm sewer infrastructure, ditching type proj- projects, and then you've got some ditching and drainage deficiencies in town. So, if you were to take on a larger project where you need the loan money, this could be a funding source for you. So, keep in mind, we're, we're going Monty, we've kind of just got a generic questionnaire filled out so that it's vague enough that we can use it for just about anything, unless we know of something specific, you know, that we're gonna address next year, that's the info. Costs nothing, to actually get the money, you have to fill out the loan application, submit all the engineers reports and all that kind of stuff. But, this is just to be on the list, you gotta get a fill out the questionnaire.
You already mentioned ditching, would that, would that include improving our drainage and the ditch that we have up, that covered with our new paint street?
Yes. So, if you needed a hundred grand in loan money, you can, you can borrow. And, you know, the ditching is the cheap part, it's when you get into roadway crossings and bike and structures, things like that, that really, it's nice. Anyway, any questions about that? Monty, you, you gonna have to make a motion on that, or just?
I should.
Okay.
Yeah, so that would be, since it has to be signed by the, a representative on the city.
So, I'd recommend the city based on the Clean Water State Revolting Fund Priority List for twenty twenty-one.
So good.
Okay, we have a motion by Wolf.
Second.
Second by Stern. Discussion. Thanks for bringing this up.
Yeah.
Hey, roll call.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
O'Vonour.
Aye. Motion carried, thank you.
I don't have anything else, I'll stick around for the meeting while everything goes up.
Thank you. Alright, brings us down to eight A, building permit, Steve Scheid. Shannon, you've got some more information for us today?
Um, I've been kind of visiting with Steve, all ideas on what needs to be done, he's given him a list. He's of course prepared to do it. I took a couple pictures today. He has started doing a few of the things. He does have the siding, do you want to tell him more on this stage? You've got the siding, you've got some doors, you've got.
Some of the siding, but he's got orders somewhere. He's, it's not in yet.
And when you put the cement insulation bottom.
Yeah.
It's, it's got the wheels and everything off, I think you can see on the picture.
Yeah. It's blocked.
It's level.
And again.
Yeah, he started putting the siding.
Yeah, he was gonna put those. And then it's starting to get solid, you know, keep working on it.
He's trying to get it going more weathered.
Monty, go back to that list, that letter. So Steve, you have a copy of this letter from Shannon?
Oh, Shannon.
Well, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we worked on the stuff. We give them till spring.
I know at the last meeting, you know, at the last meeting, we, we didn't approve the building permit because we weren't, weren't exactly sure how this is gonna play out. But in hindsight, after some talk with Monty and Shannon, we probably should have approved the building permit, so it could have, you started working on these things. Obviously, already is working on them, but uh, the, the fact, the fact that, you know, if we want to have a list of things for him to do, to get, to have done to it, to be acceptable to be in our community, I think we still need to approve the building permit, continue, but we still have to have the list of items that we want to make sure are done. Sequentially doesn't matter, but ultimately, I think it needs to be, you know, the list has to be there. A date has to, of when it's gonna be finalized, Steve. And if it doesn't, then it has to be removed, if it doesn't meet standards. Thanks for coming today, we appreciate that. I'm gonna ask you just a couple of questions, Steve, and if the board wants to have any others, but is it, so when, when you talked to Shannon, a few months ago, this isn't the trailer house that you initially were talking about? And apparently you had a mover that got a little more excited and had a little time on his hands to get things moved? Okay. Obviously, it's something that we're concerned about, and not just us, but people in the community have been talking to us a lot about it. It's at, the way it sits now is not, it's outside of the not acceptable, obviously. And I know, already seen you yourself and uh, Shannon over there working on it, not just Shannon. But, yeah, we're, it's something that needs to be addressed and the fact that it was moved without a permit and brought in and without, you know, approval, we probably would have said, no, it cannot come on site, before some things were done to it. So, um, that's why we need to address this. And, and I, I don't know anything about structure of trailer houses and, you know, to me, it doesn't look sound at all, but I've not walked into it, I'm not locked up to it, just driven by. So, that's why, that's why we do have some concerns, Steve. You have comments? The board?
What did I tell you guys? In this last meeting, we talked about, you know, I guess, what's gonna be, I guess, I guess, inspected now, so that then I guess, you know, I guess, I guess, let's leave it alone. Which areas need to be, I guess, fixed, you know, whatnot.
Sure.
So then, so then, so now we're saying, now we're saying, other than that part doesn't have to be done?
No. No, I think Casey, we still have a list of things that we want to have done. And ultimately, at the end, it needs to be inspected and approved. Or are you saying you want it inspected first?
Well, that's what we brought up, I guess, like last week.
We, I, we, we did, we talked about, we talked about that.
I'm in, I'm in alignment with, you know, what's being discussed there, because it, if, if what you feel is, is, is some that it's not recoverable or whatever, Steve should understand what it is that might be the shortcomings. And I don't know if that's where you have the, the inspection folks come in there and put together a list then of, of things that might be deficient, that would have to be corrected for it to be a habitable space?
He did visit with people that he got it from, in the neighborhood, above the water here and, and it's gone, you know, to him, otherwise, you know, he would have caught it.
Sure.
If he didn't, he could have lived in it. So I don't know, maybe.
No, it's all up, it's all upgraded inside.
Okay.
New cabinets, furnace is only five or six years old.
Okay.
Definitely.
None of it, it was all, it was all flipped and, and that what, what was on the sides were add-ons.
Sure. And that's why, that's why it looks like that.
Right, that's why.
Sure.
You know, it looks like that, he had one place, he had an archway.
Got something.
And I mean, if, you know, to actually do it right, you gotta have a problem to square it up.
Yep.
And if you don't square it up, well then it's, I mean, it'd be a shit to pull it out and then try and do it, I, I won't do it, you know. You know, that, that's also, I got too much money tied up there, you know, in what I've done in the lot even.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I, and that, that was the thing, you know, what, what's on this list, we were gonna do. I mean, we can't leave it on the skirt, we can't leave the holes open, you wouldn't be able to live.
Sure.
The only thing we won't probably be able to do is paint this siding. You know. You know. But everything else, we want to get down. If it gets colder, we were working pretty, I shouldn't say we, my nephew's been working on that. And he's got it nicely locked up, you know. I'm gonna probably take a couple. And tomorrow, tomorrow I gotta work a little and then come back and then help him. See, I'm trucking and he's doing it, the work. He got one door in. He's working on that. And we got another door, you know. That, the door on the back side there.
Oh, he stopped that one, didn't he?
He's.
Back by the trailer there.
Back by that green trailer. He was, he was finishing that up. And then, you know, we put that siding on and it will, you know, obviously make the work a lot smoother.
Well, I guess my first thing is, the permit hasn't been approved yet. So listing hasn't really moved, because you first have to approve the permit, don't you, before you need to start doing improvements? Because no matter how many improvements he has, if we don't okay the permit, none of it matters. But also before that was, I thought, there was supposed to be talk about some consequence for moving it in without a permit. Because if we allow this to keep happening, people are gonna move in grain bins, which we already said you can't do, and then say, oh, sorry, I've already got it cemented in, I've got this done. Let's leave it and let's go from there. When do we start, when do we start the consequence for moving in houses or trailer houses or grain bins? And say, okay, you have to have a permit first. He knew he had to have a permit. It wasn't completed, and now we're already talking about improvements to make it viable to give him a permit, which to me is kind of backwards.
And that's why I said we probably should have granted the permit and then have this figured in and be done.
Right, but is there anything in our bylaws that say there are consequences for doing the work before, like moving it in before, or?
We don't have an exact.
Okay.
Planning and zoning.
Dollar set.
Planning and zoning does.
We can, we can, when we talked about our last meeting, we can do that. And we can, you know, what was talked about the last meeting, Steve, I don't know if you got signing minutes or talked to Shannon or she told you or anything, but, you know, we did talk about a fine, may, maybe it's twenty-five hundred dollars. And then upon completion, you'd get thousand, fifteen hundred back, I don't know. Uh, that was discussed in this room two weeks ago. Because like Nancy said, there was no, you know, you needed, do you need a permit? You didn't need to get one. We probably want to let you move it in the way it looks, like, like it is. So, and it just sets a bad precedent, like, I agree Nancy, you know, there could be other trailers, whatever, and then, you know, just let it go.
At some point, we're giving everyone permission to do what they want and ask for forgiveness later and pay a little fine or, or come to the meeting and get your hand slapped and say, you know, okay, sorry, but I'm already there.
So what is the avenue that would need to be traveled then for, for that portion of the discussion? You talked about, we don't have jurisdiction over that, planning and zoning does, so what would be the next step?
The violation of not getting a permit? There's that hundred dollar minimum, up to five hundred dollars, can you, um.
Per day?
Yeah, it's very terrible.
So that's under the advisement of the planning and zoning?
It's, it's part of the planning and zoning ordinances, so I don't know if they would have to get a permit or it's just right there in writing and.
So can the two things be, be run parallel? I mean, the discussions we're talking about today about a building permit and then the, the items that, that we deem must be completed as part of that whole process, can that be done mutually exclusive of the discussion with the planning and zoning committee?
I don't know if it's something that planning and zoning would need to be done, I think it could be something you guys could decide, since today is an ordinance, you guys could just say, yeah, we'll find him this much. And I had sent him the letter, because I had seen that they were digging and was knowing, you know, hey, you're gonna be bringing your trailer in on a Friday. He came in on Tuesday and got the permit.
Okay.
So it wasn't like two weeks went by before he saw, gee, I better go get that permit, it was mid-date.
Okay.
It came in over the weekend, like right when I wrote him the letter and then boom, it was there on.
Well, you know, we, the board does have different options. We could even tell Steve to not continue any work on this, on the building also, until we come up with the list and see, we have to get a, build a inspector, you know. We can do that.
And doesn't, isn't that what the building permit is? Is now, if we give him this permit to have this building in here, now the inspector comes in? Or do you have to have an inspector first? I thought it was, when you get the permit, now we're gonna contact Lauren Lee since, say, oh, tonight you go in and tell us if everything is being done according to code, or.
That's correct. The inspector doesn't start his process until there's a building.
Until there's a building permit. So if we got an inspector before the building permit, we're putting the cart before the horse again, because it's already here, he's already working on it.
We can grant the building permit, and say it ten, tenably until it's inspected.
Right, I'm just, you know, if you have Lauren go in there now, what is he gonna say? What, what is he gonna look at and say, you know, these are things that need to be done if you get your building permit?
Well, may, maybe I'm wrong, but.
I don't know.
Anybody could, if someone brings a trailer in, we don't have Lauren go inspect every trailer inside, do we?
Not unless they're doing remodel, and which he is doing, right?
Not changing any of the interior walls or anything else.
Okay.
Yeah, and Lauren would be inspecting the, the fluid ability of it, but in reality, clearly to say that your toilet doesn't work or your cabinets don't close, as long as the outside is.
And that's my question is.
Yeah, I don't know what we need to do to get Lauren going and inspect the inside, as long as he gets the upside up to some, you know, that should be really all we, I think.
Cause there's, there's no wiring being redone, no plumbing being redone inside, no rooms being changed, that would, wouldn't be Lauren.
The discussions on a fine and the discussions on the building permit can, can be two mutually exclusive conversations. Can we, as, as part of the building permit, stipulate that the contents of that letter are part of the conditions of the, the building permit?
It will stipulate to the permit and we get us inclusive.
And that would include a, a deadline date with that, okay?
Is that date acceptable, I mean, do you guys want to, something else, that's just something to hold out?
Right, that's, that's a date that Shannon and I talked about.
I think, I think that's reasonable.
And the reason I chose, I, I, Shannon and I talked about that date is obviously winter. Give Steve some time to get things done, you know, and I guess we could go a month or so earlier, you know, but you never know about spring.
You could also ask for an extension if the weather is right.
Good, yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
If it's.
If it's not, if the weather is not cooperating where you can't get the skirting done or the siding up or whatever, then.
Well, Steve, what is, what are your plans? Are you planning, you, you, initially you were told you wouldn't be able to get the trailer until springtime. Correct? No? I thought that's what you told Shannon. Okay, so you plan, you want to get living in that thing as soon as possible, okay. Okay, so you will need to have skirting and heat tape and, and everything done before, and buttoned up?
Like I said, the only thing is gonna be paint, you know.
I, I think we could live without paint, you know, right now until spring.
It's gonna look a little goofy, but the siding will be the same siding from where the guy bought it from, he said, Jason's got it. I talked to him and he says, yeah, but he ran out, so he's ordering, so it should be in this, we. But yeah, everything that you had on there, we were planning, well, I had bought the water sewer, I don't know about that, you know. We need to get that, you know.
Right.
I guess meter or something.
Right, and we, and that's the other thing, we have control, we, you know, things aren't the way that we want them to be, other than paint possibly. Now, I don't think, we, we probably wouldn't hook up the water. You know, that's one thing we, one way we can, one thing we can't control, but. Other thoughts from the board? Casey?
I mean, I guess, like much, much more than I guess, like Nancy had said, I mean, I mean, you know, so then, let's say that we, that we do approve this, you know. I mean, anybody can bring in anything else and say, wow, this next year, you know, the order's gonna be able to be redone.
Well, I think that's why we have to have a fine.
No, but even a fine, I mean, I mean, right. I mean, I'd love to build a, a big old, I guess like building in my yard and then say, oh, oh, what's a fine? Grant, okay, here you go.
Yeah. I mean, I'm not saying move it out, cause it's already there and I understand he's got money involved in it, but at some point, we have to start making consequences and make sure this stuff doesn't come in. And one way is also, our contractors, do they not know our laws and bylaws, our ordinances?
Who, who didn't stay?
Wait, so.
And, you know, do we have the ability to find our contractors for moving in? Or bringing it in or digging the holes, because they didn't have a, he didn't have a building permit up? I'm agree, I hear he's not the only one that doesn't have a building permit up. So, you know, do we have resources where we can make sure our contractors know and tell them if you don't start a body by our rules, here's the fine that you're gonna get? Because it also falls on them, we, we do have ordinances, that they do know that we have them.
Yeah.
So.
And maybe our ordinance is so old and vague and we need to.
Need to be updated, because I think that's another avenue where if he doesn't know the rules, um, our contractors in town should. I mean, it's not their first job, it's not their first time they've done something.
Well, clearly, two weeks ago, we, we imposed a fine for, for another contractor for operating prior to building permit. So maybe there is, maybe the conversation is, is twofold here, one, one for the contractor that was responsible for moving in about a.
A permit.
Permit.
Well, is it the contractor's responsibility to get the permit, or is it donor?
No, it's the contractor's responsibility to see if there is a permit.
Oh.
It's not his job to get it, it's his job to make sure that there was one there at some point, because they know you don't have to have a permit. I mean.
Yeah. So, how do we want to proceed with, with this situation and how we want to, we need, I think we need to do something here.
Yes.
We can't.
Drag it out, so.
And then continue to now make our ordinance more robust for the future, that it's. That it's.
Well, I don't, for, for me personally, I, I wouldn't have a clue what, what is reasonable from, from a fine standpoint. So I don't know if I'm comfortable approving something tonight in that kind of conversation. With regard to the building permit and, and proceeding forward and stuff like that, I'm comfortable having a conversation on that and proceeding with something on it tonight. But I feel like, at least for me personally, I'd like to explore and have a little bit better understanding, be a little bit more educated as to what is, what's reasonable as it, as it relates to the fines, see what other cities are, are doing and stuff like that too. Or maybe seek legal counsel to understand what's, what's fair and reasonable there. And can, you know, like, it was mentioned here, so you give me a little fine, big whoop. You know, there, there has to be something that makes a little bit of a difference here.
I agree, Dan, and you know, there's multiple views of this. One is, Steve would like to know if it's gonna be a five hundred dollar, a thousand, two thousand? Cause at, at some level, he's gonna say, um, I'm, I'm not, not gonna go there.
I won't go there.
Right, right.
If it goes too much, then I can't stick it in the trail.
Right.
I understand.
Right.
You know?
Yeah.
And I mean.
But you wanna, you wanna answer sooner than later.
I drove around town and I see a couple trailers that look worse than that. And now, are you gonna find them?
The fine would be for moving it in without permission?
Yeah, I know that.
Okay.
But I'm trying to say, well, it looks terrible. I know, I looked, I could take pictures of it.
That's because it's a, it's a, something that's, maybe those have been here for ten years, Steve.
I know.
There's nothing we can do about those.
I, but you, you know, you're finding me because of the way it looks, is what you're saying, right?
We're finding, the fine would be if there was one posed on because you didn't have a permit before it was moved.
Okay, I, I didn't know that you needed that.
The contractor also knows.
But, uh.
Or should know.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I agree.
If you make it too big, then no.
Yeah. But, and being realistic here, the fine is, the, the issue is already been done.
If the fine is, then it's okay?
No.
Yeah, you're just saying, well, you pay a fine.
Then we, we need to change what we have on, on the book, Steve. It's, we're not saying it's okay.
Yeah.
But we do need, but like Casey said, it does need to be large enough that people will say, I, I'm not gonna do that, cause I know what happened to this other person. I'm not gonna dare bring something in without permission or a building permit or whatever.
And now that we're saying that we're gonna find you a thousand dollars a day for the last two weeks because you didn't tell us, or for whatever days, it's an eye opener, is what it is, is we need to start, we need to look at this and say, okay, this is what we need to do. Let's start here and maybe not go extreme, but we need to start somewhere and, and consequences need to be had. Cause it's, um, it's getting out of hand.
So, back to my first statement, Steve, is I, we need to let Steve know sooner than later.
Yeah.
Uh, no matter what level it is. One, so he can either continue to fix it up so it's habitable for himself, or if he just pulls the plug and says, Wade, get out of here. But I, I agree, Dan, I don't know where it started. I, I, I have no idea where, what, what we'd impose for a fee, if it's a twenty-five hundred and make it, he gets half the back on the May first, if, if it's after, I, I don't know. That's. Well, Steve, I want you to live in town, I want you to have a house here, but we, it's too bad that Wade brought it in.
That is my goal, but like I said, if, you know, if I pull out, I'm not staying in here.
Yeah.
Yeah, mine.
You know, and then you, you know, I, obviously, that's one of the reasons I wanted to stay, cause I lived here my whole life.
Yeah.
But my boss told me I could come to now that. And then you wouldn't see shit, you know? When I come in and I feel Paul likes it, it's my truck. You know, it's four or five hundred bucks a night, you know? He likes that, and that goes into the community.
We want, and we want that, Steve, we want.
That's right. So, you know, we made a mistake, okay? But I don't wanna pay out of my, you know? Cause then it's gonna take, and I won't be able to stick it into the house, and that's the problem.
Shannon?
How about if he doesn't do it by the date, then? That way he can stick the money he had into it, and he knows there's a deadline and he has to hurry to get it all done, and if he doesn't, then, then find him? That would even invest it where it needs to be pulled to start with. You know, maybe still give him like that a hundred dollar fine or whatever that the planning zoning requires, or even the five hundred if you feel like you wanna go extreme. And then maybe wait until the deadline to find him more because he didn't complete it in time.
Situations like these, I wish we met more often.
Yeah.
You know, it's hard to make a decision on the spot. I'm open to suggestions.
Jerry, you mind if?
Yeah, Buster, go ahead.
You know, it's, it's, needless to say, it's kinda delicate to sit here and listen to it, but, to the conversation. But really, trying to analyze this, I see two dilemmas, okay? The one dilemma goes to the contractor, so deal with that separately. The other dilemma is he is about two days late on the, on the permit, building permit. And if you take that into consideration relative to how many days late the one that you acted on two weeks ago, this is pretty minis- miniscule. If you use that rationale in terms of where you're at, and then also look at it from the standpoint of how much the project was, this is pretty minimal cost relative to the project that you find two weeks ago.
Right, Buster, but it's not apples to apples, that's the problem. You know, we have something sitting here that dozens of people talk to me about. And the other one, nobody knew or had any care, you know? They're not understanding at all about.
And I'm not judging on what it looks like, cause you can take that trailer house and make it look worth a thou- a hundred thousand dollars. What I'm looking at is, he's asking for forgiveness instead of permission. And that's where we're messing up in, in this community is, everyone's asking for forgiveness instead of permission, which in our, our bylaws says you have to ask permission first. And I don't care if it's two days or it's a hundred days, it's still there. And I don't care what it looks like, I, I, that's regardless, you can fix it up, it, it'll look nice, but it's still there without a permit. And I'm not saying let's take all of our anger out on Steve. I'm saying this is an eye opener. Um, you wanna be, be softer with this one than the rest of them, I don't have a problem with that. And he was only two days late, I get that. But at some point, we need to lay down the law and say, this is it, we're done. From now on, this is gonna be the fine. We had an eye opener, um, and, and we're done. It's, from now on, this is what we're doing. And then we can have time to discuss what the fines are gonna be and, and how we're gonna handle situations, but we're getting a lot of these. And I think part of it is the contractor. I, I think that he didn't move it in himself. He didn't put it there, he didn't do the work that needed to be done to bring it in. We had a contractor do that, that should know.
Pat, from a, from a legal standpoint, if, if we were to make a decision tonight on something relatively lenient, and then we, we spend some time going through the ordinances and, and, and put some teeth into that for, for future events. Is that a bad thing? You know, when you use words like precedence and, and, and things of that nature.
Well, precedence is kind of an overworked word, I think, but, cause you do have discretion in most of your decisions.
Yeah.
You, you just can't be arbitrary.
Right.
Precious, it's more the standard. So if you can justify a decision, then you're in pretty good grounds legally.
Yeah.
You just have to explain your decision, have it be something that's flash.
Casey? You know, I guess what we had talked about, I guess, like last meeting, you know, was leaving it on its wheels, and you had to get it fixed up. And then after that, we then like both, like whether or not to, whether to bring it in. I mean, I don't see the, any kind of difference if I bring in a trailer and bring it, bring it up to my place and just leave it just on its wheels and there, I guess, you know, I guess, change it on site. You know, I guess, like everything else, I don't think that needs a building permit.
But the wheels are already off.
Yeah.
And it'd have to be able to start.
Right. And, and so, so my thing is, you know, if you're gonna bring it in, you're gonna fix it, and then get a building permit, so what if he fixes it, you decide it's not worth the effort? And then he's put all this money and time into it, and we say, eh, it's not up our standards. I mean, I don't agree with that either.
As Steve said though, you, you really can't do the fix up.
Right.
It's all squared up.
Right.
So it can't be really on the wheels, you, you know?
It's gotta be.
Well, the wheels are obviously accessible to, to, it needs to be pulled out and get wheels back on.
Right.
Right?
But you put, you put the wheels back on, then, then you're, you're not gonna be in a squared up situation to where you can effectively.
No, what I'm saying is that if, if this goes south, real south, the wheels can get put back on to get, the trailer can be pulled back out.
Okay.
If Steve didn't decide he didn't wanna keep it here. Am I right? Wheels can get put out of that trailer anytime?
Yeah, that's how they move trailers later on, but, sure.
Cause the axles are still there underneath it, they just removed the, the wheels.
Axles gone.
Axles are gone too. Well, Steve, I, I'd hate to halt you from working on this anymore, to wait for us to make a decision at the next meeting, which is two more weeks away. But what I'm hearing from the rest of the board and Shannon is that we need to do a little more research on what, what we wanna do here. Is that what I'm hearing?
And it's hard to, I would say, you know, solve through the building permit. But then if you decide to find him a thousand dollars a day for two days, well, then he's not gonna stay, so.
Five hundred dollar maximum.
Okay, five, so five hundred dollars a day might be too much, I, and I'm not even gonna question that. But, so then you decided to find him five hundred dollars a day, and he says, I'm not paying now, and I'm leaving. And he's put all this time and money into it, and we, okayed the permit, you know? And he can't sit for two weeks, cause you don't know how the weather's gonna go, then we want him to have it done by May first? Well, he can't start again till maybe April. So then he's got a month to get everything done. I mean, it's, we're between a rock and a hard place, but.
Well, it's.
I don't wanna put us between a rock and a cement wall.
Right, and I hate to sound like negative, but that's not our fault.
It's not our problem, it's not our fault.
We didn't create this problem.
Yeah.
So, I, I don't, I don't know which way to direction to go here.
Yeah, I don't have the answer either, I just.
Dan, you were talking, you wanted to make it so that we have a place to go in the future, but do we, we don't have to do that right now.
Well, that's, that's why I was asking, Pat, if, if we make a decision today on this circumstance, with the understanding that, that what we wanna do behind the scenes is, is change or redefine our, our ordinances, so they, they have a little bit more teeth in there to prevent, uh, activities from taking place and seeking forgiveness versus approval ahead of time.
Wh- which ordinances are you referring to that would be? I mean, you have building ordinances.
Right.
It's our regular city ordinance from building.
And, and that's based on the model ordinances of, of national and adopted by the state. So you've got building ordinances already. I think you also have, I guess, one I'm not sort of about is the moving ordinance and what the.
Mobile home requires a moving permit from the highway patrol, actually.
Under our ordinances, so. So that would be.
Not under, not under our ordinances.
Oh, not under our.
Not for a mobile home, no.
Okay. So that's one, the ordinance that may require some.
To each.
Right. And I'm not familiar with it either, so.
Yeah, I'm not either.
But the, the, the discussion is that clearly right now, we, we don't have anything with any real teeth in it that prevents someone from bringing in anything, you know?
Sorry, you're saying?
I would, I would disagree with that a little bit, because right now under our ordinances, you can penalize somebody up to five hundred dollars a day.
Okay.
So I mean, if it's two weeks down the road, you've got a little.
Right.
A little teeth there.
So we don't have an ordinance that says you can't move a trailer house in without a permit, or?
Yeah.
So basically, he hasn't broken any rules other than?
Well, it, it does require a building permit before an instructor is set, yeah.
Okay.
And if Steve would have brought, got the building permit, showed Shannon pictures of this, we'd have said no to bring this into, into town.
You would have said no, you're not, you're sure how you're able.
I probably would have said, it needs to be fixed.
Can't, can't tell me how.
You're right, Nancy, I cannot, I can't tell any of you. We, I mean, I said, I think we should make sure it's fixed up before it's moved in, what I would have suggested, yeah. You know, Dan, are you suggesting that we, we look at what we're doing, one day, one day fine, since he was two days late, and one day on that for now, and then approving it with conditions that have to be met by May one?
Yeah.
Just in motion, yeah.
But, what about, about when do you turn the water on? When do we say, oh, it's, it's good to turn, I, I, I don't know.
Well, isn't it, isn't that part of the inspection process, and before the, before the city activates utilities and stuff like that, you, you have the final inspection by, no?
Typically, you would have a certificate of occupancy.
Yeah.
Right.
It's what we had to have.
Right.
The city doesn't issue certificates of occupancy.
So when they, you turn the water?
But there is, but there is a final inspection.
You have a final inspection based upon your building permit? That says everything is, is up to code and, and passes and stuff like that. I, I don't know when you turn the water on as it relates to that final inspection. Do they have to have the final inspection and then water can be turned on? I, so I'm not sure about, you know, the water part of it, all right?
In that, we just wanted to ensure that if there is a water sewer tap fee, that he also pays that before we'll turn his water on, is kind of my background.
Cause you kinda have to have it on before he skirts it, so you know your plumbing is up and going, right?
No, you gotta skirt it.
Okay.
It's just easier to give, I mean.
That was why that was added, just to be sure that.
Mind you, put that list back together, please. So you, uh, number seven, water sewer tap fee applicable, and it is, apparently.
I'm, I have to talk to the water guy, see if he can. He doesn't have to cut into anything, does he? Is there already, you know, is it already there?
With that applicable, it, it would just be determined and then you would, you would go based on that.
Yeah.
So we'd just check the water for me?
Yeah, I just, I wasn't sure what the.
General, speaking of water sewer taps, if they actually have to tap the water or sewer main.
But since this was a new plumbing, he had put in that wasn't there, and he had all kinds of trouble with that, I wasn't sure if there was original taps there.
He tied into.
He didn't have to tie it in?
Into the, curb stuff.
But what about your sewer?
That was just, oh, that was.
So it was already there?
It's too close.
Okay, okay, so then you might be like.
That can be determined.
Yeah, sure.
So then on the water end of sewer, then it's already, I guess, tied in?
It's not hooked onto the trailer yet, but yeah.
But it's in the main.
It's available.
Yeah.
They put, yeah, they, they said we do on a wa, main, a new line up to the curb stuff. And then that's what it gets, it gets about, didn't have any problems. And he had, I think he had them guys open it, water came out and he plugged it and made sure he sealed it good on the curb stuff. So I was glad he did that.
Well, to me, it sounds, it sounds like the, uh, the legally binding thing here is, is the fact that the permit was not in place prior to movement of this trailer in. And so, so what you're telling me is there's already provisions in place on that that says up to five hundred dollars a day fine can be put into place on, on that. So I'm going to make a motion then, that, that we approve the building permit with these stipulations attached to it and that, that particular date in there is a deadline. And as part of issuing that permit, because the permit was issued two days after, we'll make some concessions on, on a day's worth of penalty. And, and I'm going to say that it's gonna be the five hundred dollars.
So is this gonna be the final list or on, by May twenty, it may be painted as well? And.
I, I would not say.
Not by May twenty, uh, May first, okay. But we need, we need to have, there needs to be a deadline that I, I feel.
Painting portion of it?
That needs to be a completion date. You know, are we gonna, do we wanna let it sit there?
Well, why don't, uh, why don't you go ahead and add to, add to the list the painting portion of that with a, with a final due date of June first?
Okay, we have a motion by Dan?
Second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. DC.
Well, I guess, one thing is I don't think the board should, I guess, accept, uh, accept, I guess, the penalty, the pass, it's been, I guess, you know, I guess, the planning and zoning.
What was it?
The last meeting Jason did, but, but I think like prior to, prior to, uh, the planning and zoning came up with the fine for the, I guess, uh.
Silas.
Silas, yeah.
No.
You guys were the governing board, you guys came up with that amount too. I think I just recommended the fine.
Well, that's what you said, is that planning and zoning recommended that the fine was a hundred and a half.
I think I emailed them all, but in the end, they all said, it's up to you guys. If you wanted to charge them the five hundred dollars, you could have. But that was just, cause I didn't know, I've never done before and neither had they, right?
No.
So they were just like, well, do this. But it is your guys' decision.
And in, when we tweak the ordinance or work on the ordinance, we can, I think we have the ability to set different levels that we want of, or guidelines of how that, how that's done. And obviously, we're gonna have to find some new, some cities that have done this recently and change theirs. We gotta do some work to it. I think we need to, cause I don't, I, you're right, I don't want anybody just bringing something in and then we're doing this again.
Yeah.
And then too, I guess, let's say that these aren't met, like in like June and like first, what are we gonna do?
I think we shut the water off and we ask for, either we decide if we're gonna be finding him every day after June one or have him remove it. I, that's, what else, what else can we do? Can't put him in jail, yeah, yeah, you know, don't want to, Steve, but I don't know what else we can do other than shut the water. You know, maybe we can't even do that, maybe I think we can't condemn it. That takes, you know, what that process is like. We probably can't even turn the water off, I don't know, but. I think that needs to be in agreement with Steve that on June one, that there has to be something.
I could add something in the letter, you know, stipulating that he agrees to have it done by this day and if he doesn't, I don't know what you wanna do then, but.
You think, you think June first is reasonable?
Cause he's not a kid at all, the outside's gotta be done before he can even live in it.
Right.
And he wants to live in it as soon as possible.
You know, it sounds like his plan is to, to have all of that stuff that's on this list here basically complete before he even moves into it, as soon as possible.
Please amend the letter then.
Perfect.
Yep.
What, um.
I think it's that, that, you know, what we do have on the books is it can be five, the five hundred dollars a day after that.
Up to, yeah.
Up to, yeah.
So if it's not done by that day, it's done everything by that day.
Yeah, I hear Steve thinks that's a reasonable timeframe. Hey, we have a motion and a second, any more discussion? One more discussion. Roll call.
Helen, hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Stern?
No.
Over to her.
Hi. Motion heard. Okay, Steve.
Jerry?
Yes.
Fine, you assess the penalty, when does that do?
I don't know. I don't know. Today's Monday.
Within thirty days, sixty days?
Thirty days.
Thirty days? Thirty days? Is that added to the motion then, Monty?
I think you should probably take some kind of action to put that on there. Just do a separate motion.
Say, we'll do a separate, do a separate motion then.
To make a motion that the, the fine imposed would be due to the city within thirty days of today's date.
Okay, we have a motion by.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion? Roll call.
Helen, hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Stern?
No.
Over to her.
Hi. Okay, Steve, good luck. Shannon will stay in contact with you and get you a letter.
Or updated letter, yeah.
Yeah, and actually Shannon, if you, on that letter, have the signature line for Steve, so we'll, yeah, him sign it and we have a copy of it, please. Dave?
And then can I ask, Monty, can you email us a copy of the ordinances that we have in place now for?
They're on the.
They are, okay.
Pat? If I would have voted no, and it would have been two to two votes, then what would we have done?
Would have failed.
Yeah. All right, AB, building permit review for Wade Sol. Okay, what you, you can see here, I, I brought, I asked Shannon to talk about this and I just, I, over the weekend, I noticed Wade was building over there some more and, um, it was kind of the top portion of that, that barn or garage that he's putting up. So I, I asked Shannon if she would pull a, a building permit, uh, so we could look at it. I thought it'd be a good idea if we just reviewed this tonight, because we did ask Wade also, since he is in violation of the ordinance, that he is running a commercial business out of residential location. And we told him that he needed to find a location by the first of the year. Is that, that's the letter, right? Monty, can you read that real quick? I'll, I can't.
April twenty fifth.
I think we were gonna review it in January, but we have given it until April twenty fifth.
Okay. Okay. Then I remember the discussion because of the weather and moving.
What year? April twenty fifth of what year?
Next year. There's no year.
You're right.
Is there a date above Wade's name on there? Yeah, April of twenty.
So we gave him.
So, so we gave him twenty days? It, it's not clear to me in that letter.
No.
In that letter, you're right.
Yeah, I did put twenty twenty.
So that's the intent, is it's twenty twenty?
Yeah.
Yes.
Discussion.
Okay.
So I think, you know, he has not done anything over there to start moving anything out. Obviously, this past nine months, he was looking at the location across from Jimmy's and wanted that spot from, uh, to purchase and planning and zoning said no, this board said no. And, um, I think we just need to maybe send this letter again, Shannon, reminding him that he needs to be, um, looking for a, a spot to, to move to.
If nothing else, just to, just to put the year in there, so it, so it's clear.
Yeah.
But.
Yeah.
How, how quickly he does it, Jerry? If you throw April twenty fifth or twenty twenty out there, if he's got till April twenty fifth, twenty twenty. He technically, legally won't have to do anything until the twenty fourth or twenty fifth of twenty twenty.
You're exactly right, Dan. And, but you know how.
Just saying.
You have children, I have children. I, I'm deficient sometimes with things and people have to remind me. I think it's a good reminder to Wade that we're still not.
Yeah, right. And I'm comfortable with the letter going out, but, uh, in terms of being disappointed that you haven't seen any action at this point. He doesn't have to.
I agree.
I just remind him that we haven't forgotten.
Fair enough.
Exactly.
Yep.
And the new letter with the, the year.
Yeah.
Yep, okay. That, that, so I, I didn't wanna take any action. I just wanted to revisit this since it was not real similar to Steve Shines, but it's another situation that, you know, things fall between the cracks sometimes, it's a good, it's a good reminder. Okay. Reports.
So then on the building permit, what are we gonna do with that? For Wade?
We approved, we, we approved this permit.
So, so discussion tonight on the building permit was?
This is just, exactly, just a review, so. I, I thought, when I went and talked to Shannon, I saw him building the second story on this building.
Yeah.
And I thought, oh, oh, this is a violation of his permit, it was in a two-story building.
Okay.
Well, it's, it's one story with a lofted storage space on the top, it looks like. So it does, it is starting to look like this, so that was mine. If anybody else drives by and asks questions, it's good for the entire board to know what's going on.
Okay.
Yeah, we approved this, so there are no, no changes. Nine, uh, okay, Casey, reports. Nancy?
Yes, fire department would like to purchase some equipment. And the cost is seven thousand six hundred thirteen dollars, and Monty, can you remember what it was for?
It's rescue equipment, their combo tool, uh.
Yeah, he talked about what it was for, they've been looking at it for quite some time. And he said there are funds available in their, um, which fund was it, Monty, the?
There's actually under the rescue.
Rest, yeah.
And their small equipment, or small equipment and other parts. They would, uh, take about six thousand from their rescue budget, which still has eighty-three remaining and the remainder would come out of the small equipment, which that's fifty-three hundred remaining of the budget.
Is that a motion, Nancy?
That is a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion by Wolf to purchase a rescue equipment and a tool for fire department.
Second then.
Second by Hiller. Discussion. Wolf call.
Wolf?
Hi.
Helen, hi. Stern? Over to her.
Hi, motion heard.
Uh, the only other thing I have is I am, will be wanting to be a twenty-nine with ambulance for him.
Thank you. Dan?
Underwater sewer and garbage, uh, we had our job posting closed and so we narrowed down the candidates list and we'll get together to perform interviewing and stuff for, for that position. Um, also, uh, on the lines of monies and the equipment, we have a garbage truck that they were having some issues with power-wise, had it checked in by, checked on by mandate. And it was determined that we've got a actuator for the turbocharger on it that is, is not functioning properly. And we, Dave had them look closer into it, because it was suggested that oftentimes failure of the actuator is due to a faulty turbocharger. They have at this point reported back to us that the turbocharger on this vehicle is okay, that it would just require the actuator to the tune labor and parts of eight hundred and three dollars and thirty-six cents. So I don't know if we have to for, for that dollar amount, make a motion, but at this point, in discussion with Dave, we'll, we'll take that chance on, on moving forward on just replacing this actuator. And they assured us that when they change out the actuator, that they will test them, the, the whole assembly to make sure that nothing looks amok at that point in time. If we have to change out the whole turbocharger.
He will to give me a price on that.
Yeah, that creates a whole nother conversation.
I'll get that information to you as soon as I get it.
Okay. And in the course of doing all this investigative work, uh, Dave found out through, uh, through a qualified source that there is a, a recall, it's, that would be covered fully, but it's nothing that prevents us from using the equipment right now, so we'll wait until an opportune time to, to take it in for that particular service.
Okay. All right, so since it's eight oh three and it's under the thousand dollar threshold.
It's more FYI.
Yeah.
And, and we consider it to be, at this point, good news.
Anything else, Dan? All right, um, Lester?
Well, uh, chat a little bit about the highway grant. And a couple of other things that come to mind with that would be, one of the areas that where we could use some additional sidewalk is that area of like Casey's from Casey's all the way out to TSC and hook around so that we could hook up with a bike path. So that would be one area. Another area that I had in mind that would not, and I think it would come, would be eligible also would be, would be kind of nice to have a sidewalk running on the north side of where the Pioneer property is and the city park, you know, from that corner coming down. And then the third area would be, I still think that it would be advantageous if eventually we could hook in from the bike path or the walking path up at the north end of town and come down, is that seventh over here? They, they ended up putting a bike path in there eventually. That way then, if we could accomplish those things, we could have our city encircled in either walking paths or bike paths. And so I think that, uh, you know, and if you wanted to, if you wanted to do it all in one lump sum or do it in phases, uh, I'm not sure what would be the best, but I think that area now, uh, the first area that I would really look at is try and extend that path past Jimmy's all the way to TSC. Because, you know, I do see people walk up that way, well, of course, you end up walking on the road and that road, since TSC is in there now, has gotten pretty, there's some traffic down there every once in a while. So from a safety standpoint, that would be a good leg to add, uh, to that. And then, again, you know, originally, when we were thinking about Pioneer, I always thought that ideally, what would have been nice is if we could have, could have encircled that whole lot with sidewalk. And then they kind of, they could have had a, you know, your own little walking path, you know? Just in that area. Just in that area, I know, I realize that there is some sidewalk now on the north, excuse me, on the south side of Heritage. But that doesn't run all the way either to the corner. And I know that when we had the DOT folks in and Steve Mullin was out here that time, who has since retired, he was talking about that, yes, that using the, the lot, uh, Pioneer and the park lot there would work really pretty well, and then that you would be able to connect then with what's extended out here in the parking lot of the dental place. So, just a food for thought. And being that those highway funds are there, I mean, how do we own? I mean, especially if it would be a ninety percent match, you know? And I did try to find out, you know, being that the old highway goes through town here, I do think that this area down here would be eligible for those, under those highway funds as well. Certainly would be on this one.
Well, it's worth them, at least finding out. Don't say no.
So it'd be a matter of, you know, trying to get some trying to get some bids, I'm sure, I, I don't know, have you ever worked on one of these grants?
Oh, yeah. Several. I mean, we could do a map and a cost estimate for whatever you want, but I'd have to have it for your next meeting.
Right, because that's December thirty-first.
Probably a, a hearing at, or a meeting at the second December meeting. And we're going to have to get it done. Do you want any maps and cost estimates? Just you tell me, we'll have it for next meeting.
Okay, let's wall it over, okay? Those are good points, Buster. Now, for, again, if we can make that decision tomorrow, it'll be a little easier. They should have talked about it and, and visited by another.
I guess they'll take You'd say that those apps have to be invited at the end of December, December thirty-first.
December thirty-first.
Yes.
But they require a public hearing, right?
They require a public input. Process. Document the process, yeah. So, we have, we can, we can do it the December
Sixteenth.
Yes. Not an issue. The way that program would be, Jerry, it's just that it'd be like a twenty twenty-four or twenty twenty-five project, the DOT would just build it. Like, and then they would send you a bill for your ten percent. We, we probably wouldn't be involved, I mean, it would just be them doing it, if you were successful in the application.
Buster, what else?
They're still working on the garages over there.
Saw them over there today.
Yeah, I, I don't think they've got power there yet, though.
Dave, I'm sorry.
That's all.
Dave, anything?
No, pretty much ready for snow coming, got all the trucks ready, pretty much all the snow equipment, we, you know, did some blowing on that last snow, but now that it was required was a good chance to get all, to get re-familiar with the equipment and stuff, so didn't find any issues with anything, so I'd say we're pretty much ready to go.
You know, the water department scheduled parties, the camera that
I don't know if Ryan's out of hold of them or not, I thought he was going to.
Want to check on that tomorrow? I see Josh Meiser has not been out to do any work yet.
Oh, I suppose he got caught in that snow, I can check with him too, to see if the weather's gonna be favorable for him.
He, he was in last Friday, and said he's hoping to get to it this week, by Saturday.
I figured that snow delay in the winter. And before the weather gets real cold, we're planning on washing down the lift stations before the real cold weather hits, hits too cold, you just can't do it because they steam over so bad, you can't see what you want, so that is probably this week yet.
Dave, um, under my reports, a couple of things I just wanted to bring up and touch base on something that I think I'd like to see us look at. One is, I think the last time we did a community needs assessment has been at least ten years ago, if not longer. A lot of things have happened in our community. I think our demographics have changed quite a bit in the last ten years, I think with our our services that our community has now, private and public services, you know, we've done a lot in ten years, and I think it's always good to get a pulse and feeling of what our community feels, that means they think we can improve on, what we could add to our community. But it's, it's something that when I was at the Main Street Conference, one of the breakout sessions I was at, that was one of the things talked about is, when's the last time you've engaged your community on what they think we need? Obviously, people aren't going to come and fill these seats, uh, the first and third Mondays and talk about that unless we engage them. And with that engagement is really hitting our high school kids too. And talking to them about, you know, they're the ones that we want to get hooked on Coke or Pepsi, you know, to see what we want them to live here, we want them to choose our brand. We want them to be drinking our truly, and that's one thing, see what, what they want to move back to. So that's something I think I'm gonna reach out, um, to the state and see how we go about that, is that to get a facilitator to come in and do that, I'm not, I'm not trained in doing that type of stuff. Jared, have you ever seen that happen, you, you guys'?
Some days, we did, we were involved in a kid group, I think, last year, I can try to find out who that was.
And along the same lines, um, and I mentioned, talked to Dan about this the other day, but I know we don't have a crystal ball, but I think down the road, five, six years, seven years, ten years, things are gonna change dramatically in, in our region. We all know that coal is under attack big time, and it may or may not be sustainable no matter what kind of carbon capture or oil cycle or whatever process they come up with to make coal clean. Uh, because, uh, that's just one of those situations, it's, it's a reality. There's a lot of forces moving that direction to make sure coal is not, uh, used in our future. But what do we do if it starts to go away? You know, what kind of services can our community provide? Uh, right now, looking at this, uh, general ledger that Monty sent out, five hundred and seventy thousand dollars of our budget comes from coal severance and conversion. And then the, the other large majorities come from property tax and state aid. And what do we do if that, it's gonna start to shrink? And how do we, we don't have a huge, uh, safe deposit box full of money. So, I think that's something we need to, I don't want to scare our community, but I think everybody is a lot of people know the writing on the wall when it comes to, um, our resources here. Does the garbage gets cut back? Do we cut back office staff, street staff? Is this now volunteer position, and there is no, no huge checks for the commissioners anymore? I don't know, but there's gotta be, we need to start looking at what happens after when that starts to die away. So, anyhow, food for thought, I, I have no answers, but yeah, Casey.
You know, one thing that I, that I kind of guess talk with other people about too, you know, you know, coal gets, I guess, like taxed right now. And that, you know, I guess like wind power, you know, I mean, we don't see any kind of tax from wind towers, you know? You know, now, now I mean, here, we're gonna build some more of them, I guess. I guess, uh, um, I guess, uh, but I mean, I would think that the state or, when the counties, you know, maybe start to levy some kind of wind power generation tax. And where that, I guess, we can see some of the tax.
And I don't know what kind of, that legislatively, how, you know, we need to start engaging our legislators about that to get that ball rolling, but and maybe it will take six years or something like that to happen, but maybe now is the time to start those discussions. That will affect more than just Hazen, obviously. That's a lot of jobs. I, I agree. I think Monty, you, you mentioned that today too, I think, about the generation tax.
What, what was the genesis of the, the coal severance tax? Was, was that a stipulation for them to, to build in, in this county? That that would be instituted as part of that whole process, or did that come after? I, I don't know the history on that.
I'd ask that same thing, I don't know who, who told me this, but anyway, yeah, because the co-ops, they don't pay, they don't pay the property tax. So that was one way to, oh, pay that.
I don't know either, Dan. Just, uh, cost of doing business in the county, maybe, I don't know, but, no idea. You know, do coal, do the oil counties receive a extraction ta- tax directly to the county? So it's the same same thing, pretty much. Anyhow, that's was that?
Per fair.
Per fair, yeah. Well, and I, you know, if you want to visit individually about this, I'd love to talk more about how we engage our community about that also as well as, uh, our community needs assessment. Uh, down to eleven, cost share for lot survey, eleven A.
I don't know if you guys want me to run through this really quickly for guys like Nancy. I know Dan didn't get a chance to see these, but trying my best to be quick.
Don't worry about being quick.
Probably have them in the wrong order here, but, uh, I can start off. But if you go through this, this one here was the plat of where there's snow then like rolling there. And that, and this was a plat that was at the county until probably to fall this month, that's it. So then anyway, and the lot that I bought was lot one, it's right beside Jimmy's bar, and there's and there's a road that does go in there. So when the city did, city did, I guess, buy back this lot back in, I think, like eighty-nine or I guess ninety. And they then, I guess, like put in a road, and they never updated the plats here. So then anyway, for all these years, that lot has been getting them taxed on that whole area. And, um, and I guess, as I bought this lot, the only thing I wanted was I didn't want to have to pay the tax a little taxes specials. So anyway, um, so as you can see, there's, on this map, there's no indication of where the, where the block corners at for the property things, so anyway, then I had Ken Link, um, surveyed us, and while I was in the process, I've always wanted to split off a area, my dad's my dad's property and transfer that into my name, so I mean, I thought, well, that was a good time to do it. So, um, so now I guess what it came out of it is, you know, it's now the city, excuse me, that's you know, it's now the city has got a real nice map of the road and the, and the, I guess, you know, in the location, you know, of two of the, I guess, the block, I guess, the block corners, you know, I just thought that, you know, just the spring, you know, that we had paid, I guess, Ken Link, you know, to find, I guess, uh, um, forty-eight, I think, like block corners you know, that were lost, but, um, so I mean, I see it as, as somewhat of a value on the city, you know, because now, I mean, there's a usable map with, I mean, coordinates the block corners and property things as well too. So I mean, you know, I'm asking for a little bit of help on this.
Shannon, you want to talk about what happened when you had Ken Lincoln?
Oh, just he didn't really see that it was any benefit to this.
Shannon and Monty and I have all three met with Ken, talked about this to see what, what brought for information that we couldn't get elsewhere. And Ken said, well, he said this
No, it's Casey, ninety-nine percent. It was a little bit, obviously, a new, a new map is nice. We didn't have to have it, Monty, I think he said, all we have to do is subtract from the corner to find those, those corners or pins.
Yeah, he said the square footage could have been easily been determined by just taking this distance, the fifty feet or fifty-three feet by the overall length and subtracting that out.
So, we did, we did bring Ken in and visit him, see what, what his thoughts were, so. I, I did, I was there the whole time, I know Shannon and Monty were with him a little longer. Is there anything else that you, that can add?
No, and as it states on here, these, these pins were found. These pins were found, he installed this pin and this pin and this pin back here. But, yeah, just that these were all in place.
You know, but the thing is though, is that no one could tell me like where those pins were at. And on the whole plat, it does not show its pins, so. And it's not quite as easy as just going fifty feet, because as you see, on the property boundaries are not square, so, so then you know, the fifty feet, you know, is is, I mean, like at a ninety from here. It's not in line, and same here, it's not fifty feet here, it's so then, so then, it's very very hard to, you know, say, okay, if I go off of this pin here fifty feet, where am I gonna find that? You know, I just do, you know, I mean, I mean, if this was replatted prior, there's no way that I would went through all this. Because I was told that you know, in order to get my lots taxed to have the proper value, that I'd have to have it surveyed.
And Shannon told you that.
Yeah.
But I said, also, you have, had it planted to do that other lot, so either way, you would have had to have Ken up. And according to Ken that other lot cost about a hundred bucks for Ken to go out there and find those pins. The rest of it was to do the other part because he couldn't find that one.
If it was only that much, I would have done it years ago, you know, because that was a dream of mine for, for these ten years.
According to Ken, there were, there were pins that were in the wrong place on those other plots that you want. So that's where the cost came from, but according to him, because those pins on the north side were the south of the fifty feet, were already there, all he did was just found them.
Yeah, but
So, we already had them there.
Nobody could find them.
But
Took a surveyor. Took a surveyor.
You needed the survey for what you had done, and not for the money was invested. Ken figured it cost about a hundred bucks for him to find those other pins.
So, maybe that's the path we go down. If it was a hundred dollars to find those pins. I'm not, I don't want it to feel like a slap in the face, but the reality is. Any, any property owner, when they're, when they're acquiring property, or if they have questions to the legitimacy of the. The, the, the plat or any of those type of things, it's, it's the. Property owner's responsibility then to incur the cost on, on solving that and having. Somebody come out and, and either replat it or, or come up with, you know, what is legitimate about it. So if, if the normal service offered by the city is to help find the, the pins. That should be in, in place for, for property, particularly if you're buying the property from the city. Then, then I would think whatever the cost is to, to find those particular pins. Would be something that if, if that were not able to be accomplished through the city. Then, then I would be comfortable having that conversation, but the, the overall here. Anytime anybody goes ahead and has somebody come in and, and plat their land out. And if it results in an updated plat going to the county. That happens at, 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 at the cost of, of the, the landowner in that situation, and the. And the city gets the same benefit of that updated drawing in that case, if it's within city limits. As the, the, the situation I was talking about today.
Well, the only thing I don't get is, you know, even on that map right behind you, there's not a street. You know, long as you're not locked, you know, I mean, in the city. Years ago, they just did a sloppy job, you know, as they added on that street. And so then, I mean. I'm not saying that my lot size changed by just a little bit, but I mean, I don't know if like anyone else that has a, a, a full width, I guess. Like city street that runs in their lot. And then, you know, because we tell them, oh no, our street is your problem, you know, I mean. I mean, I think if this was done the right way. Years ago, I wouldn't even be here.
You know, it's interesting, we asked Ken about this too, and when that street went in, and he thought it was right around this nineteen ninety-seven timeframe. So saying that the city did a sloppy job, Casey, might be a little bit of a stretch, you know, it. This isn't an updated map, obviously, there's a lot of things now that are not here that are here now. Um, and maybe we need to get this updated. I, I'm not sure how um. Like Ken said, he goes, that was right, right at the same timeframe.
Well then. Well, if that's the case, then why then, isn't there any map out there that shows this road? That's the only one. This is what they had. Down at the county.
Because the road is included in the description. You bought the lot west of fifty feet where the road is. So that's, that's how the city handled it at that point, whether that was where.
Probably wasn't road.
I have no idea.
So yeah, less than fifty feet. And then you were worried about the fact that the square footage wasn't correct on the landlord?
Yeah.
Okay, so this year the values are even set, and after you file an abatement, you can get a credit on whatever you were over taxed this year. And then correct it in Vanguard and.
Well, it's a problem solved. After I spent all this money, and I get. Get your load out of my property.
No, the majority of the money you spent, according to Ken Link, was for your plat that you split up from your dad.
Well, you said that Ken said it would only cost.
A hundred dollars for him to find those pins, but, okay, so.
He said for that one.
What, what?
You had said that Ken said it costs a hundred dollars to split down off my debt.
No.
No, no, to find those big pins. The rest of it was with your dad's, and where he had that, where the, that one pin on the south side was off. That's where Ken split the cost.
Who updates, who updates the plat drawing? Like, we see it here now with the road incorporated in it and everything like that.
That's Ken did that.
Ken did that, so there was a cost associated with that as well that put the road in there.
To draw it in.
So, I would, I would contend that there, if, if it was a hundred dollars to find the pins. There's probably a portion of the cost of putting that drawing together also to incorporate that road in that.
Yeah.
So.
I agree.
I don't know if Ken could speak to an approximation of, of what. That added time would have been on the, the incorporation of that road into that drawing. Because I, I don't have any problem. Incorporating that into some restitution here as well, because that, that should have arguably been done. In, in the, at the time in which the, the city put that street into place. My opinion, well, you know, because normally, you don't just accommodate it with, with the description, it's a description and the actual plat drawing. That has.
And that's then it's, it's legal description since the dawn of time, there's lot one less north fifty feet.
Well, not the dawn of time, it started in nineteen ninety.
Oh, yeah. So what did it say before that?
Lot one, yeah.
Okay, so that's where they put the road in.
And I'm, I'm gonna say that that was in the early nineties, you know, you know, to do the fact that I can, I guess. You know, I guess, you know, I guess, you know, I guess I recall, you know, as a young kid. Teenager, um, Randy, I guess, a silverman. Stopping by my dad's house, because my dad had wanted building over here. About, about, I guess, about, I guess, you know, a special assessment doesn't be charged to pave that road, right? Says the ground over.
He was, yeah, so I mean.
But, I mean, ninety-seven is what they paved it. It got paved here two or three years ago.
Well, that's really.
Fourteen of them.
The back door too.
And how would the board like to proceed?
Can we ask Ken what, what his. I don't know that, it, it, I don't think there's an item that says added street.
Drafting of the plat.
Drafting the five hundred dollars, that's seven hours.
He, he did that.
But that's included both in his, buying the parcel and putting the road in.
At a hundred bucks an hour, okay. And then is there a fee for, for filing that plat over at the, uh, county as well?
Yeah, the twenty dollar.
That's in here?
No, we did it ourselves. I drove it down the stamp.
Gotcha.
At that point, it's handed here, we'll do the rest.
Well, we can ask him to itemize that.
I think it would be hard to separate the two, because he did all that basically as one job. I think we just need to.
We just, we take a stab at it.
Take a stab at it, you know, we don't. Because drafting the plat, printing arrangements and pickups, well, but office calculations drafting, part of that is. The road, part of it is the parcel, he got from his dad. You know. One probably took more time than the other, but determine which is which.
If you want to look at these calculations further. Casey's probably pay the bill, we can make, we can pay it back the next week if we want, but.
I was gonna say, if you run through the bill, it's gonna make any difference, because I'm not gonna be able to determine.
Well, based, based upon what I'm looking at here, uh, if, if, if in fact a hundred dollars to find the pins. I think there's, there's some drafting costs associated with it, obviously, to put that street in there for. But maybe the city should have, not maybe, but the city probably should have. Should have done it when they first put that road in there. I'm gonna make a motion that we reimburse. Any, any amount of three hundred and fifty dollars. To cover the costs that were associated specifically, in my estimation, for, for the placement of the road on a plat. And finding other pins.
Motion by Bill.
I'll second.
Second by Wolf. Discussion. Wolf call.
Hello.
Hi.
Wolf?
No.
Hold on.
All right. Thank you guys for your time.
You're welcome.
Wolf A. GovPay credit card payment option. Monty sent some information on that.
They currently use a service called N-Corp to process credit card payments. All they, right now, they process is traffic citations and utility billings. The League of Cities is endorsing and working with GovPay. And they would be able to process any kind of payments that we want to take by credit card. And their fees are slightly less than what N-Corp is currently charging. Granted, all fees are passed on to the customer. But, I mean, it's a way to save a resident a living money, it's not a whole lot, but. And it would basically be handled the same. We would get, they would collect the payments, they would send us that amount. Daily, weekly, however we wanted to set it up, we would then manually post those payments into our accountings.
So, so it saves the, the citizens money, those, those people that maybe currently pay their water bill with a credit card?
Yes.
Okay. And what other, what other bills, you know?
It could be used for anything. We've had people ask if they could pay an invoice for gravel or anything with their credit card, and it would. And it, it could be used for that then as well, transit, busing, those types of.
So other than the, uh, some of the highlighted origination type costs. Then it's a, it's a transactional fee?
Yeah.
So there would be an offset of money from the city to switch over to this.
To switch over, yes, it's a three hundred dollar setup, and then if we want the card reader swiper on the desk, it would be another four hundred and ninety-five dollars for that. And that would include the website work to include a pay, a pay button on our website.
So, so how do you do it if you don't have that swiper?
They do it by phone, or you just take the card and enter it on.
Enter it on, enter it as a key into the thing, like that was on.
Wonder how is the fee scheduled less than for the customer?
Yes, yes. Right now, the swipe is a three percent charge for any amount.
No.
If you do it online, and either call in and we enter it, or they do it online themselves, it's a flat fee of three dollars and ninety-five cents. Their fees here, up to sixty dollar transaction is a dollar seventy-five. And then anything over sixty dollar transaction is a flat three percent, whether it's online, swiping, or, or whatever. So, yeah, if, the three percent is the same, but the dollar seventy-five for those smaller transactions is less. And especially if you're doing them online. If you pay your ten dollar ticket, you pay a three ninety-five processing fee. Here you pay a dollar seventy-five. Not that that's a good deal if you're paying a ticket. It's, it is, yeah, court does go a little bit smaller, but. And you don't have to decide tonight, obviously. We're one of the first ones, Tammy and I sat in on a web conference call. Conference call with GovPay. We are one of the first ones actually even looking at this. They have contacted all the cities in the state. So far, we're, we're one of the first ones that are actually seriously looking at.
So this makes more to me for our citizens, and it's not more work for us?
No, it, it wouldn't change our work, it would just be the cost, yeah, it's just the setup cost, so.
We have, we have a lot of transactions taking place right now.
I would say it's sixty, seventy a month.
That last quarter stuff was pretty good.
Yeah. I think in the last week, the last week in N-Corp, where I think there was thirteen payments and one fifteen. Like I say, the request is for a lot more to be done that way, because a lot of people would just assume. I don't know if they're getting their kickback off their, their one percent cash back or whatever, but. There's a lot of people would like to pay.
More you spend, more you save, right?
Yeah.
The more you get that.
Yeah, yeah.
So there again, if you want to just wait and think about it a little bit more, I can try and get some more information if you want.
But, I, I don't know if I'll even think about this next two weeks, but.
You've got nothing else to think about?
Yeah, sure, yeah, but I. I might, I kinda like my secret. There's no, there's no motion to, and Monty move forward with this, then. Move on. Bring it back later.
So this is being endorsed by.
North Quay.
Which go to League of Cities.
Yeah.
So they or somebody within that governing agency has kinda done some homework, or maybe even some solicitation out there to different providers?
Right.
Okay.
I'd be willing to bet that GovCard contacted League of Cities.
Sure.
I'm sure this was better. Okay. We'll move on to the, I have routine approval of the bills, financial statements.
There's a couple more bills on the desk. One of the pretty big ones, but the majority of that is members coming. All of the hundred dollars of that local repair was paid by NDR.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Wolf. Second, second by Stern, special. And now, Wolf call that.
Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Keller.
Aye.
Hold on, Howard.
All right, motion carried. Y'all received this, uh, interview, Ken. All right, media adjourned. Thank you very much.